I'd like to call the November meeting of the Westtanka School Board to order. If everybody would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair wants for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abolled? Motion carries. Announcements, Finance Committee meeting December 5th, 7:30 via Google Meet. And regular school board meeting is December 9th at 6:00 PM right here in this room. At this time, are there any visitors that would like to address the board? None? Then we'll move on to the student reps report.
Well, let's begin with Westtanka J C's.
Student rep.
Show us how well I am.
How you doing?
For how young you think you are.
Yes, I'm going. Okay, so we, I'm Stella.
I'm Mason.
We, in the past week, hosted our staff appreciation meet for students. This was a district-wide thing, but at the high school, we had thank you cards for our staff. We locked up breakfast cards, snack cards and things. And we also hung veteran state posters around the school with different veterans who are related to NHS staff or students.
And then as well for our other club, we have DECA. Their district competition will be on January 12th. And then members are currently busy working on various projects. That could be like different research projects or preparing for role plays. And then DECA has around 180, 190 enrolled right now. And nine are already going to ICBC from their virtual business challenge, which is basically a simulation on different business things. And they'll be going, I believe, Orlando.
Yes.
Yeah, they're already going, so.
Letters of Love has been meeting once a month per usual. And they'll be hosting a Crumble Cookie fundraiser coming up in December. It's really popular because they're bringing that back.
And then Rotary is continuing to meet. And then Math League has also been, that's a newer club. I know it was in previous years, but there's kind of a gap, but they've been doing great. I believe they got first in the section and like district, so at their last competition, so that's really cool.
National Honor Society will be distributing 1,365 coin setas and $1,000 in donations on November 25th. They had 69 units of blood collected on November 13th. And each unit of blood saves three lives, so it's very impressive accomplishments there.
As well for NHS, we did the Haunt for Hunger, which was on Halloween night. And I believe we raised way above our goal for the weekend of basically going to door-to-door, getting non-perishable goods, and it exceeded expectations. And now on to athletics, I believe basketball, dance, wrestling, and skiing. I don't know if Alpine did, Nordic did. They've all begun captains practices, and then basketball and wrestling are for sure starting today.
Yes. Gymnastics has begun as well, and their first meet is on Saturday, September 7th.
And then girls hockey has a record of two and one. And for the first game of the year, I just put this in here, they beat Orno two to zero, so that was pretty cool.
The rap, I don't know if you guys know this, but Orno's first line of forwards, all three of those girls are doing, are going D1 for hockey next year. And two of them are on the U.S. Under-18 team, so pretty exciting going for us. Yeah, and then the boys hockey's first game is this Friday.
For new commits, we have five commits that signed, I believe it was last week. So Cole Munster Tiger, he has signed to Southwest State Minnesota for wrestling. And then Carly Heinch has signed to UW Stout for softball. Mia Weaver is signed to the University of Missouri Kansas City for volleyball. Grayson Van Nelson and then Jamison Domato are both signed for baseball. Grayson's going to the University of Minnesota Morris. And then Jamison Domato is signed to Hamlin University for baseball.
Now for arts, Grandview will be showing their Newsies Junior play going on through November 21st to 24th for next week.
And then this weekend, the community theater performs SmackDown at the Pageants.
Our MWHS theater is currently holding auditions in the next couple of weeks for their one-act play.
And then Wind Ensemble and Concert Choir have been working hard at preparing for different concerts. And I believe our Mad Jazz is preparing for some Christmas or caroling around town, so.
And for visual arts, we'll be submitting outstanding pieces to the Scholastic Awards coming up in December.
And then on to academics, guessing you guys all know this, but we're top 10, one of the top 10 districts in the state for MCAAs in Minnesota. Test of academic skills as well, I believe we're third in the state in reading for the 2024 test scores, third in the state in math, and then fourth in the state in science. So that is all we have tonight.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, no, but I would like to tell everybody, I'm very proud of Stella on the work that she did for the Rotary Interact Club. They did a thing for Operation Gratitude where she coordinated and got cards made from the school districts, all the school kids. And I counted them, there was like little over 200 cards that we mailed out for Operation Gratitude. And those were what the military people overseas, so.
Great, because you can hold it. Yeah, it's been fun with Rotary. Thank you, Mr. Ronger.
Ralph, your.
Okay, here we go. Westtanka J C's, Westtanka Wings, $10,000. Farmers Market, Hilltop Primary School, $100. Beverly Farms, Shirley Hills Primary School, $2,473.25. GMS BTO, Grandview Middle School, $1,127.42. Anonymous, MWHS Boys Swimming, $25. Mighty Cause, Westtanka Community Theater, $170. John Corl, Mary Estra Coral Scholarship, $2,001 penny. Minneapolis Foundation, Spring Creek Scholarship, $6,000. Patrick Jackson, James J. Jackson Scholarship, $2,483.95. Minneapolis Foundation, Cheryl and John Dale Class of 63 Scholarship, $5,000. Mersky Family Foundation, Cheryl and John Dale Class of 63 Scholarship, $2,000. Butch Humbert, Larry Excel Scholarship, $100. So far, fiscal 2025 year, we have donations of $102,318.63. We have a non-cash donation this month from the Allah Ama's Westtanka Way gift cards for $736. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've looked at the check ledger for October and September, and all seems to be in order.
Thank you, Ralph. Are there any people who have something to report on the school board committees at all? If not, then we'll move on to the finance report, Captain.
Good evening, board. I'll give you just a brief financial update through the end of October. This graph is our enrollment for the first two complete months of school. It's our October 1st snapshot and our November 1st snapshot. Again, the first cluster are the two elementary schools, our middle school, the middle, and high school. And then the total enrollment is on the far right. And you can see by just rolling your eyes across, there's, we've had incredibly stable enrollment so far this school year, within one student. Our adopted budget that we built was created around 2,386 students. So as of right now, we are positive 20 students. We will continue to watch our December 1st count, our October 1st count. And then we will make those adjustments into our revised budget. Any questions on enrollment?
Do you find that there's between semesters then, as you get after the first day of the year, there's some adds, some decreases? Is that how it works?
We do see a little bit of fluctuation sometimes at Christmas if we have families moving in or out. But we've been really fortunate, there's not been staggering changes. But you do see some at Christmas time. Okay, revenue and expenses through the end of October. Across the top indicates the revenues that we have collected through the end of October. The total is $7,497,000, or the highlighted number is 18.4% of our adopted budget. Expenditures dropping down, we have expended $10,391,000 of our green adopted budget, or 26.7%. You can see the financial reports indicate our revenue and expenses are trending consistently with prior years and then also with our adopted budget. Okay, just a couple of other things. With the audit complete, the Business Services Team has been transitioning to our focus on revised budget. We will be working on that the next several months and presenting at the, excuse me, February 10th board meeting. And the first Thursday in October, or the first Thursday in December, we have our Finance Committee meeting. We'll be reviewing the budget calendar. We'll have Becca talking about our branding and enrollment efforts. And then we will also be preparing and proofing our truth in taxation and levy information. And that's all I have. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. It is November, and every year I come to the board. And this is the night that we present a summary of the world's best workforce, plan and results for the 2324 school year. And as you know, that is a required state report, and we'll get into the details about that. It has five different goals that we measure, but all public school systems measure. So this is our annual report tonight. But I first want to start and just acknowledge, you heard a little bit of the student report tonight, the accomplishments, the success that we're having. And when you start looking at these different measurements outside groups that are recognizing our district, it truly is a result of the work that's going on in classrooms. And one thing I love to think about, and I share with staff, is that we are, we work in a very competitive area of the state. And for our families, our communities, they expect the best. It doesn't matter if you're small or if you're large, that we have to really be focused on our work and the learning that goes on in our classrooms. This is a result of that work that's going on. And before I get into all the goals tonight, so proud of the staff. Very student-centered, always wanting to think ahead, always thinking about what is it that we can do different, we can do better and to service our kids. So it's a fine, fine place, if you're new to Westtanka, to have your kids go to school here and be educated. So with that, with our World's Best Workforce report tonight, we always start with our strategic plan, that is our RUTTER. That is what we use to funnel all our efforts through, is with the strategic plan. And then that leads to the five goals that is part of the World's Best Workforce. So we measure all children are ready for school, all third graders can read at grade level, all racial economic achievement gaps between students are closed, all students are ready for career in college, all students graduating from high school. Those are goals that the state of Minnesota gives us, and then it's up to us to figure out how we're going to measure that. Now, a couple of caveats as we go forward, in that box at the bottom. Next year, the legislature changed the name of the report from World's Best Workforce. That no one really understood, I already put that back. It's now going to be called the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. Again, we'll have to, a little asterisk and explain what that means, but that will be the new report next year. Also, number two, the goal, all third graders can read at grade level, that is being retired. And what's being replaced is what the legislature said, that they want all students reading at grade level K-12. So they felt, why are we just focused on grade three? It should be K-12. That's all part of the READ Act, that's all part of the act where we have our professional development with literacy. Some more to come on that. And then they've added a new goal, that new goal is prepare students to be lifelong learners. So we're working on, as an admin team, about how are we going to measure that and what does that mean? And that'll be something we'll report on next year from now. Okay, into the goals. So the first goal that we have here tonight is that it's around kindergarten readiness. So you think about kindergarten screening, that we have a goal of hitting 90% of the students that are screened are ready for kindergarten. This past year, we hit 86%. And we don't worry so much about meeting that percentage or not. What it's about is getting every kid that's going to kindergarten in for screening. And if we see something in the screening that maybe is a red flag, a concern, then let's talk with that family to make sure whatever that might be gets addressed. So that's what screening is about. So we had out of, 160 students that were screened. 23 students were referred to early childhood special ed or to medical or mental health special. So you might think, wow, that's a big number. I'd also say, I'm so glad we found those 23 kids. And again, as I talked with Sarah Grimm, our early childhood coordinator, this is still a remnant of the pandemic. And students that were at home, maybe not socially stimulated, could be a number of things that were going on. It is anticipated that these numbers would get better over time, but that was the result of this year. The next goal, again, as I share, is going to be retired, all students in grade three are achieving grade level literacy. We measure the results in three different areas, oral reading fluency, comprehension, again, the reading level. And here's what I'd summarize, if you look at the 2024 results and then look down at the bottom, 2022, we're making, we're making progress. Still room to grow, but when I look at where we were with the passing rates, proficiency rates in 2022, everything is getting stronger and getting better as time goes on. It takes time to implement intervention supports. It takes time with the READ Act, professional development we're doing, to make impacts. But what I see here is encouraging. I don't see anything that is a huge red flag for us, other than just keep, keep focusing on the kids, assessing, understanding what the gaps are, what the strengths are as we go forward this year. The third, the third goal is close the achievement gap between student groups. This one, we look at our state testing, we look at our MCA results for this one, and we look at our highest performing subgroup and then our two largest subgroups. So in this case, if you look at the right-hand side, what, what we have here, our largest group, which is the white group, had a passing rate on the MCA math in 2023 of 77.6%. The first large, next large group that we have that we track, our special education group, their passing rate was 45.2%. So there was a gap of 32.4 points. Then we look at that, those same two groups, the next year. And you see the proficiency rates, and the gap here was 32.0. So there was an achievement gap difference, subtracting the two achievement gap numbers of .4. So what does that mean? That means that results were the same, were stagnant, nothing changed around. But I will tell you, if you look at the bottom, we also measure against pre-reduced lunch students. And there was 234 in that group. The achievement gap in 2023 in math was 23.8. That dropped to 18. That was great news to see that, because our goal was to decrease the gap by two points. And that dropped 5.8 points. And again, we like to understand and analyze like what happened, where are we making gains? What are the programs we're using? What are the efforts around MTSS that maybe are impacting that? So that's math. And then when we look at the reading results, again, to summarize, comparing our largest group to special ed, the gap shrunk by 2.7 points. But in pre-reduced lunch, compared to our largest group, it shrunk 7.8. That's great news. And again, we love seeing that, but again, what we do as building staff and our leadership team, we go right into understanding what are the variables, what led to that success? Where can we make inroads this year? So the design is to get that gap down to zero. You're always, are aiming for that, but we'll always will take success when we see it decrease the reading. Yes?
I noticed, well, do we also look at boy versus girl?
We haven't done that, not, not in a formal way. We have, we have that data.
Yeah, because I, because we, you say the, just the achievement gap between student groups, which is general. But I noticed that the actual goal doesn't say anything about boy versus girl, it talks about, about race.
Correct, correct. So it's a, it's a little bit how each district forms that goal and what we want to focus on. And these have been two groups that we've focused on to say, what can we do different, better to increase our achievement?
Yeah, can you speculate on, it looks like they're pretty favorable on the pre and reduced on both categories.
Yeah.
Can you, and nothing holds you, obviously, but can you speculate on why you think that you have a pretty good result in those two areas?
I think there's a couple of variables, and, and I'll do more than speculate. We now have very intentional intervention supports built in, in particular in reading. And even before that, we have very specific assessments. And we look at those assessments, it's all part of our multi-tiered systems of support. I really do believe we're making inroads with our students. And probably a number of those in pre-reduced lunch are in that group, that, that intervention support that we're providing is making an impact.
So earlier and more accurate.
Yes.
So Mark, what's like the state average gap, achievement gap?
Well, they don't, yeah.
How do we compare relatives?
Yeah. Well, what the state will provide you, they're not going to provide you this data. They do provide you the passing rates, the proficiency rates in reading and math than the MCA's. And you will see those usually around 50%, 55% passing. It, it, it's quite a struggle when you look at that. Science, MCA's, those are, be down maybe 35% passing rates. So it definitely, at the state level, they really focus a lot on why that goal is huge. Because not everywhere, not every district's the same, it's our district. And we have our own to work on, but other places, that gap is even wider.
And the, the state reports using similar groups, student groups?
Well, the state will track the proficiency passing rates for each of these different groups.
With these same groups, okay, yeah.
And we can see that. They don't, they don't publish achievement gaps like this, but we know their passing rates.
No, because I mean, I've heard numbers from around, it's like 50, 60% gap. I mean, I don't know what that means. I see that. You know what this means?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It shows you there's a number of kids that are succeeding well, and there's a number of kids that are behind. And it doesn't matter if you have a couple of kids behind, or if you have 50% behind. It's our responsibility to figure out what is it that we need to do as a public school system. And honestly, as a statement, it's so, to make sure all kids are moving ahead and progressing. So that, you know, that's kind of the, the whole run of why we would have this World's Best Workforce in these goals. Is to make sure all public school systems are focusing on these, these different goals in their own unique way that they have. Just have, just, just a couple more. The last two, this one is all students career in college ready by graduation. And what I like about this one is that we're focusing then on a college repertory assessment. So we're looking at the pre-ACT and the ACT, and that's always an indication of college success. And the way that we look at this one, we look at the gap of, of the cohort, so the same group of students as 10th grade where they're taking the pre-ACT. And we look at the highest performing group and the lowest performing group and their gap. So that one, in terms of color and the white group, the gap was 2.2 points. You notice that, that when we measured that same cohort, and they're the graduating class of 2024, that, that gap actually grew. But the thing to realize, if you look at those numbers, both groups, their composite score went up. Just one group went up faster than another. Now, there's a lot to think about, like why is that? Why one group went up faster than another group? Why would they both go up the same? And there could be a lot of variables around that. Here's the most important one, is that when we get these results back, Jolene and I, we look at those results. She puts that in front of her staff, we look at the strand data. And then we start thinking about, for example, what can we do as a high school to be more effective in preparing students to take the ACT? So for example, this year, Jolene and her team, they're going to revamp the ACT prep academy. And they're going to put some of the sessions in during the wind time, during the school day. So where it was before, all in the evening, the hope is that we can expose more kids to tested strategies, looking at what it means, the content of the different disciplines of the test, just to bring more kids into the fold as they're preparing for this test. The other thing that I think that we're also realizing, you know, during the pandemic, you know, you heard a lot about, you know, you apply for colleges and universities, it's test optional. Well, it's still test optional, but that's starting to change again. And, and now you hear more about, you know, forbearred scholarships, the ACT score. So the message that we give our students now, you want to do your best on the ACT, just in case. Just in case you're up for a scholarship, and as things continue to change, that you have as strong an ACT score as you can. So our job in this is to really track and measure how our students are doing. And to our best capability, what can we provide our students that support them with their ACT prep? Not every family can afford a $600 Sylvan ACT preparation course. What can we do here in-house? And that, and that's what we do, and that's part of this goal. The last goal, you've heard me speak a lot about graduation rates. So our goal is to have a graduation rate that is at least 95% or more. And over on the right-hand side, our results this year. And the 2023 graduation data is the most recent data the state has, so we use the state data. The graduation rate is up to 92.6%. We look at the five-year rate, and we have the six-year rate, 96.8%. We're happy, we're pleased with that increase. There's more work to be done. And so the two things that I'd share with you is that we look at that data, and we're very clear with who are, who's in that, that 7.4% that were part of the graduation cohort. And you have, use the terms dropouts, students that they dropped out of school, but we don't know where they went. You have unknowns, and unknowns are students that they were with us, but then they didn't show up the first day of school. And again, you can't count them because they didn't show up. And then we have what are continuing. And the continuing group is beta primarily of special education students. Those are students that go on to extend, I call it extended year, but it's continuing, where they might be going to school until age 21, 22, and then they get their diploma. And that's why you'll see the six-year graduation rate increase, because we're bringing in those special ed kids. The last thing I'd share on this goal is that we now have a process in place where there's myself, Jolene, school counselors, a group of leaders in the building. We meet twice a year, and we go over our graduation data. Like I, tomorrow morning, I could tell you what the predicted graduation rate is for 2025, because we know exactly where every kid is. And that's been a great development with this school. Where maybe before, we weren't quite sure, we didn't worry about it. Where maybe before we weren't quite sure, we didn't worry about it. Now we're very precise, we know exactly where every kid is and what's happening with each situation. And that is the benefit now is these raising the graduation rates.
And if you pulled out the two unknowns, mean your graduation rate would be what, ninety-nine percent of?
Two, two kids?
Yeah, it, it, it's, yeah, I mean, we, we gotta keep in mind with percentages, the, the, the fluctuation of the percentages. Okay, I have just a couple more things. So that's world's best workforce. And, and then what happens now is that we submit this report to the state. You have something on your agenda to approve these results, and then we're on our way for the coming.
I'm just nervous a little bit, that new standard that's coming in about preparing students for lifelong learning.
Yes.
Are you gonna come back and test me after fifty years to see if my test scores go up?
You want to play that program.
Exactly. You were part of the program back then.
Yeah, that's true, like, my grandfather didn't, my grandfather didn't literally, right? Yeah.
Well, Victorians get adopted.
The MTSS didn't exist.
More to come on that.
I'm sure you can see how they test that one, how you get.
I, so like, we're working on it. I wanted to share with you tonight, we, we just received, right after a media break, the graduating class of twenty twenty-four ACT results. So we take, we look at this, we analyze this, we take this result very seriously. So you have the trend data, but look at the bottom line. The, the West Hanka composite this year went up to twenty-two point nine. So that, that's any time you increase an ACT composite by one point or more, that, that's great success. Now, I'll also say, I'm not happy with the twenty-two point nine. We've been higher in the past. We, so we don't just say mission accomplished, we're gonna keep working on that. But in our own internal measurements, we do look at the West Hanka top fifteen percent. And that composite was thirty-one point two. So we're, we're pleased with that. And then the other, the other pieces that we track when we analyze the results, the state composite is twenty point seven. And we had a hundred and seventy-one students complete the, the ACT. And a factor that can impact your composite is the number of retakes. So we think about students, they take the ACT once and they're one and done. And then we have some students, they might take it two, three, four times, cuz they wanna get a better score. And you'll notice that from twenty twenty, the number of retakes was seventy-five. You know, that's right as the correg of the pandemic was just starting. And it dropped dramatically, now rebound up to eighteen. So that is going to usually positively impact your composite score. So my message tonight is, we're happy with the increase, but it's something that we have very specific focus on at the high school. And there's a number of different efforts, we share the ACT Academy, we look at the strand data, we look at these different things. Cuz we think there's more room to grow in that area, but that is the result. Now, the state has not released the data yet where we look at our, our neighbors and ourselves. Again, I'll share that out once that data's been released for decision, it's not available. Last thing tonight, I just wanna share with you two, two quick updates. Part of the twenty twenty-three Minnesota legislative education mandates that we are now required all public school systems to offer a personal finance course. It'll be part of a new graduation requirement for the current freshman. And I worked with myself and Principal Herfel and a, and a crew of teachers will be working on that and, and figuring out what we're gonna offer and when we're gonna offer that course. And then the other one is a mandate is the ethnic studies course. And we're required to start this course with the twenty, twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as, and we have to offer it, be selective. It's not gonna be a graduation requirement, but we have to offer this course. And again, Jolene and I will be working with a group on building this course and getting that up and running here in the coming months, as we also need to fulfill these requirements. So more to come on that.
And that's elective course.
Selective course. The, the personal finance course, you'll probably will see a board action item later this year. We'll have to revise the graduation requirements slightly to reflect on that. But first, we're gonna get all the details figured out and then we'll bring, update the policy to you probably later this winter for your, for your review approval. So that's the report tonight, always thank you for the support. It's always taken, so thank you.
Thanks.
So first of all, what a dark, cold rainy day today. My goodness. But quite different in this boardroom because we've really had a great start of the school year. And so I'm gonna be talking about a few things today that are action items. I'm gonna make an introduction of Dustin Kempf and Eric Palmer, who are with Kraus Anderson, and they're gonna talk about some bed openings. And it's just, there's a lot of really good news. Starting off with a couple of action items that you're gonna have. In your consent agenda, you're gonna be taking a vote on two added work sessions. One in January, one in February. That's for the board to gather from two to four on those two dates to talk about goal setting. And so we're gonna review our goal-setting process. And what we've recommended out of policy is that after this goal-setting process has been set, that we look at updating our goals to get that in place by December of twenty-five. And so we will, if you have more discussion you'd like to bring up to the December board meeting, you can, but excited about those two dates, excited about the process and setting something that works for our school district. It's always exciting when your goals are starting to look tired. And I think that's the work of many different people that have allowed that. But here to mention the board's efforts, so thank you for that. Also, in your action items, you will see that there's action items on the school name. And I have slides here. I think I've covered the naming and how it's worked with our brand review. I think when we did our brand review, we did surveying and we saw how West Hanka and Mount West Hanka are interchangeably used between our district and our high school name. And instead of them complementing each other, they compete against each other. And we pull that from just where we've seen our schools listed in the media. And we see over ten different ways that our high school is referenced. We'd also notice when it's done correctly. And you look in your local paper and they'll reference that the West Hanka class of two thousand twenty-four, which is correct. It is the West Hanka class, but then underneath that, they talk about Mount West Hanka High School. And then when you look at a student, West Hanka Sonnenberg, and this is frequently in our paper. And so even when it's done accurately, it throws some mixed messages to our community. And so out of this, we talked about what was the reason for changing? And we talked about the brand inconsistency. We talked about how neighboring districts, and literally you can go all around the West Hanka district, and you can see how the middle school, the high school is the same name as the district name, as a way to build consistency and a brand identity. And then also just how it represents our community. One thing that we've talked about long in this process is our goal of having a strong brand, but also honoring our history. And so we've talked about how if you were a, a Mount Mohawk high school graduate, if you're a Mount West Hanka White Hawk graduate, or if you would be a West Hanka high school. We, all of your histories are important, which we wanna hold up and honor in this process, and we believe we can do that. The reason why now it becomes so important is we're at this phase, just like with our branding exercise, that we're gonna start reshaping our high school and our middle school. And it's the time that signage goes up. And you might say at first, well, it's just the front of the building. And then all of a sudden, you start walking around and you realize that it's a lot of places. So from a fiscal point of view, it also makes sense to have that discussion now and bring it to the board's vote. And so through this time, we've really worked hard to communicate this. One thing that we want to do intentionally is from the very beginning of our first communication in July, that no one would be surprised by this news, that this was a discussion going on. We had conversations with our staff. We were able to talk to student senate leadership. We're able to talk to the chamber, well, it's the West Hanka Community in Commerce now. We were able to talk to PTAs that wanted to talk about it. And we've sent out emails with the clip of the board meeting in the past. We sent out our newsletter in print to all homes. And so we've really put an effort that people are informed that this discussion is happening. But it brings us here today, and what we're asking you to consider is changing the high school name to West Hanka High School for the start of the next school year. And so not immediately, this would be for the next school year. And also Grandview Middle School, changing that to West Hanka Middle School, starting next school year. Hilltop and Shirley Hills would still stay the same. And the reason why that timing, it's just how our signage is beginning to change in our facilities. So we think that's the best segue point is to do it starting in July of this year. And so that comes to you for a vote in your action items. Another thing that comes for, to you for your vote in the action items is unbound bids. And so we take ourselves back one year from today, or not today, but this meeting, and you were ratifying the election results. You think about that, one year, and all that's taken place since that vote. One thing that we did is we hired on Wold Architects and Paul Apikowski and Elizabeth are here. And we hired them as our architects for this project. We also hired on Kraus Anderson. And Kraus Anderson, we have Dustin Kempf and Eric Palmer here with Dustin, or Kraus Anderson as our construction management firm. With them, we started to get to work and we prioritized what are parts of this project that we can engage with immediately? And of course, we thought about it, but now that it passed, we had those conversations and we said, the tennis courts is something we could move forward with, and also primary security. Security was something we wanted to push if we could. And now we went through a process of design, we will bid it out those projects, and we're near completion with both of them. At that same time, we started design groups for the high school and the middle school. The high school was a really large design group, it was quite a process. Here today is Jolene Herfel, our high school principal. Her engagement with her staff and her staff's effort of gauging, along with parents. We also have Mason, who is on that design group as well, so we had students engaged. That was a great process. It was a process of looking at the deliverables that we communicated to our community and improve upon them. And so when we talk about security, when we talk about rightsizing classrooms, when we talk about the importance of a specialized classroom being designed how it serves kids the best, not just where kids can fit. When we talked about the expanded opportunities in vocational nursing and machining and robotics. When we start talking about the pride of the building, all of these things coming into a design, working together of how can we maximize the dollars that were entrusted in our hands to really serve our students well, make people proud. That came to bid just here recently. And what you have on your agenda is the first three of several bid packages. And so with that, I'm gonna have Dustin Kempf, who's the senior project manager with Kraus Anderson, and then also Eric Palmer, who's the project manager, to come up and talk about the bids that are before you. One thing that's fun about both, both Elizabeth and Eric are West Hanka residents. And so it's nice to have people that are tied to our packages that not only are they working with companies, but this is their backyard and it's fun to have that ownership here. So Dustin and Eric, can you come up and talk about the bids?
So I'm bringing my laptop up just cuz I know it's probably gonna be a lot of questions and we got a lot of numbers to back up. So if anybody has any questions along the way, just interrupt me. So just wanted to go over final contract documents, just the overall process that we went through here. So final contract documents were received from Wold here in mid-October. And from there, K E performed another review of documents and bidding packages. These packages include anything as far as drawings, project specifications, bidding instructions, expectations, work scope for contractors to bid. So what work scopes are, is they're defined by what a work, what work a contractor, subcontractor must perform on any particular project. For example, you can have a work scope isolated to just concrete, one to just masonry, one to just drywall, mechanical, and so on. And in front of you, you have three of the contractors. Three of those contractors from bid day are what we determined to be some of our critical path contractors. So Eric has already gone through the process of vetting them out, and I don't wanna oversimplify the vetting out process. You're probably on the phone with each contractor for about one to two hours each, just making sure they have everything covered that we say they need to have covered. But just backing up our project statistics, so we sent this out to a total of about seven hundred and one different companies. Three hundred and fifty-two of those companies downloaded and viewed the documentation. And we had a hundred and fourteen total bidders commit and turn in bids for the project, which on average, that gives us about three bidders per work scope is exactly what you wanna see, that and around. So the project's coming in actually under budget as we speak right now. Substantially under budget, so we're in a good space. The three bidders that you see in front of you account for about forty-four percent of the total cost for what we have anticipated for construction costs. So that's what you have before you today, and I welcome any questions, any clarifications from anything that happened along the way.
So these three bidders are the initial ones, the first ones we need to get started on the project, right? I mean, as far as, of, of the bulk of the initial work is gonna be by these three bidders?
Yeah, so when we said now we determine that anybody that had any long lead mechanical equipment or pre-cast, something that's gonna take a long time to, I guess, do shop drawings, which is put together their own documentation for Wold to review, ordering long lead material. These are the contracts that we wanna have in place because some of the, as far as electrical equipment or mechanical equipment, some of them can take up to six months to a year to order, so we wanna get those guys locked in right away. So it was the same with pre-cast. And if anybody's heard, there, during COVID, pre-cast was over a year old. It has gotten substantially better, but don't wanna risk.
So these are the three we wanna lock in tonight.
Correct.
So these are like forty-four percent of the total cost, so I would assume that this is pretty encouraging for the next, the rest of the bidding process is gonna go on, or is it kinda unique to these types of?
Comparing the high school scope to now, we have Grandview and the stadium and Shirley Hills.
So let me clarify the forty-four percent number that I gave you, just so we're clear. So the bid day numbers that we got, it was about forty-two million, forty-three million in overall value. Forty-four percent of that value that we received on bid day is in front of you with those three numbers. But regardless, regarding how it's for all?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it would be very encouraging for all the rest of the contractors coming.
Well, we have bids for the other, we're just, we're just not signing up on those contracts this evening, right? That's.
Right, are you referring to other projects or other contractors in the high school?
I'm referring to the, the rest of the projects. In general, whether it's bid out or not, I guess.
The high school project is completely bid out.
Oh, it is.
Now, I have, I have to go through the remaining, remaining contractors and vet them out. But yes, the project is fully bid out.
What are just having to sign up?
One of these we've talked about, Ralph, a little bit, we were, I was with Kevin on the tours, so in his truck the other day. The fact that this is like a year and a half long project is attractive to bidders because it's offers stability. Some of our other projects are not quite as long-term as that, fair to say.
So I guess that's what I'm getting at, if we were gonna expect to come in with lower bids, it would be with these type of contractors or, I'm just curious. I mean, it seems like things are looking very good right now. And you'd probably expect that to be the case. I mean, that's part of the project.
You never know.
So I think, one, with the tennis courts and the primary security, those were successful. The high school did come in under, and so we feel really good about that, and that's a large scope of this bond. We have Grandview that'll be coming out early December. And so we'll see how those bids come in, and then the last one will be Hilltop Shirley Hills with their maintenance and then the stadium. That one will be, what are we thinking, next fall, next in December, or have we set times? So with it, A, yes, you should be encouraged that a large portion of this bond now has been bid out successfully. The, the rest are smaller components, so. The, the rest are smaller components, so the Grandview scope is a lot smaller than the high school. We'll be encouraged when we get those back, and hopefully that does well. Dustin, with the high school package, the remaining bid packages, do you, do you foresee that coming to the board at the December meeting?
Yes.
You, would you see any reason that they, not, not all of them come, or do you think we should expect by that time that?
Think we should have a majority of them done. If not, there might be one or two lingering, but there won't be critical contractors that we would have linger behind. My expectation is that I have to.
Then in early December, we have, the Grandview bid package will be opened, and so whether that can get in the first meeting of December, we also have a facilities committee meeting where if we feel like that's a good time to take action on it, we'll put out to the public that we're gonna accept bids at that facilities committee meeting as a way to keep things going on that we can procure what we need to for that project.
Yeah, I don't think I'm out of line by saying this, but the high school total project cost, I think that probably accounts for about seventy-five percent of what we have out there right now, so it's a big deal that we're under budget.
Well, that's, that's what we like to hear.
That's, that's great news.
One, one thing that I, I appreciate you deal with Kraus Anderson, who does the largest scope of K-12 work, and so trying to connect with the people that are bidding out, that's in your favor. I appreciate the effort of putting this project out to them. And talking to one of their other project managers that's working with Grandview, one of his efforts now is to communicate with those people that were successful on our bid, to let them know about the Grandview project, if there's synergy between that. So I think not only do they try to get communication that's out there, but they also try to target some of that communication of who potentially could be interested in. I think those strategies work in our favor. I, I compliment this project, both from Wold and Kraus Anderson. You do that large design, and then you have to constantly estimate what's the value of this project, what is this gonna come out at? And until you get those reports, you really don't know. You can have the best estimators out there, but I can say that our high school design exceeds what we communicated to the community, and I'm very pleased that it came in under budget. And so that's a compliment, and I think how it was designed, how it was bid out, but it's a compliment to our staff about how they engaged with this. Again, I echo Jolene's efforts along with her staff, just a lot of great energy of how we can really do right by this project. And so it's exciting to start approving these. The project breaks ground in April is what we're, we're projecting. That's gonna be weather-based, but we would be expecting to start in April, and then that'll be going for, till August of, August of twenty-six. So we got, we got a long, long time with hard hats for that project.
I didn't full process, but I promise it'll be really nice when it's done.
I just wanted to throw in a comment, and I appreciate all the help, your work on this. Gary and I, Dave are on the, have been working with you on this through the facility committee, and, and I've seen your work, and I know that a big part of your role is to create a market for these bidders, and you did a great job. So, and so testament, you know, this, 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 being below budget, being below your estimate, I mean, that's, oh, credit goes to you guys for a lot of that, so.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. We, we feel that way on our end too. You guys are a great team to work with, so we appreciate it.
I have a question on that. So we're, it sounds like there might be seventeen, eighteen million there, we're talking about the bids getting approved here, and then you say substantially under budget, what's like, do you have a percent? I'm just curious. Is it something that's under ten million?
I, I think when we look at where they've, they've come in, so one thing that they're in the process of doing is vetting out what is low, low bid, and so when they have done that, then we'll have a little bit more of a number, but you'll, you'll see how this gets put together. But yeah, right now, we're clearing under what was estimated, and I think in the next months, we'll be able to dial that into a true number.
Right, and the reason we hesitate is because you can even see in this packet itself, there was a contractor that dropped out, and the value of his bid was about one point five million dollars, busting his estimate, so we can give you a number now, but it's gonna be wrong in about two weeks.
No worries. Sounds great so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Great news, exciting times. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move on to discussion items. Chair moves for approval of action item seven A, approval of American Education Week, November eighteenth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seven B, approval of renaming Grandview Middle School to West Hanka Middle School.
I went there, so I'll second.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item seven C, approval of renaming Mount West Hanka High School to West Hanka High School. Is there a second?
Second.
You went there too?
I, I did, if I want somebody else to join.
You take it, this is your deal.
I'll second it.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Chair moves for approval of action item seven D, approval of the first reading of Policy fourteen-hundred and Policy forty-two-thirty. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Chair moves for approval of action item seventy E, resolution of school board, governing board supporting Form B application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item seven F, approval to reduce district-wide float kitchen assistant one position from six hours to four hours. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item seven G, acceptance of structural precast bid and approval of contract award for Mount West Hanka High School addition and renovations part one. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Chair moves for approval of action item seven H, acceptance of the plumbing and HVAC bid and approval and contract award for Mount West Hanka addition and renovations part one. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And the chair moves for approval of action items seven I, acceptance of the electrical bid and approval of the contract award for Mount West Hanka addition renovations part one. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Does anybody else have anything else to bring, bring up tonight? Got exciting times happening, you guys, this is fantastic.
Don't blow it now. Look at those guys right there. Tell it to them.
If not, the chair moves for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.